Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 6:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have announcements for our upcoming meetings, and then we have recognitions for services on commission, and we have a recognition for Good Samaritan. Regular council meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 4th at 6:30 PM. Our meetings are always on Tuesday, but this Monday, we're going to have the meeting because of Night to Unite, and that's always on a Tuesday night, so we're moving our meeting to Monday. We have a work session, and then another council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August 19th at 6:30 PM. A work session scheduled for Monday, August 11th at 6:30 PM, and the reason for that meeting is because we have an election, and by statute, we cannot have meetings when there is an election. So that's on Monday. We also have a special council meeting on Friday, August 15th at 8:00 AM, and that is to canvass the primary election. We also have meetings because of our truth in taxation, and I want everyone to know when we will be holding that. Our first work session to set the max tax levy is Monday, August 11th, 6:30. We will adopt the maximum tax levy on Tuesday, September 2nd, at 6:30. Then we have department budgets and their presentation. That will be Tuesday, October 28th, at 6:30. Then we have a budget work session scheduled for Monday, November 10th, at 6:30. Another budget work session on Tuesday, November 25th, at 6:30. And then we adopt the budget and the tax levy on Tuesday, December 2nd, at 6:30. All members of the public is invited to come to the meeting, and if you wish to speak, I'd be happy to recognize you, and you can speak at any one of these meetings that will be held with regard to our truth in taxation. And now, I will recognize our citizens who have served us so well, and I'll do it over on that side. On behalf of the city council and our staff and the citizens of Burnsville, we would like to recognize and appreciate Mr. Gene Grazini for his dedicated service to the community of Burnsville and the Economic Development Commission from June of 2008 to June 2014. I don't see Gene. Gene, where are you? You're hiding! Come here, Gene! And council, would you like to come so you could be in the picture?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Gene has led our Economic Development Commission as the chair, and has done such a fine job in helping us with all of that and the recommendations that you've made. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You steer a great ship.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So everybody is here. Come on.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, she's going to take a picture.
Okay, on three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Thank you, Gene. Say hi to my group. Thanks to you.
Dan?
Yeah, hang around. We have others to do. Again, on behalf of the city council, our staff, and the citizens of Burnsville, it is our honor to recognize and appreciate Brian Wolf for his dedicated service to the community in the Parks and Natural Resources Commission from June of 2010 to June 2014. Come on over, Brian. Brian is one of the superbrains on the commission, and we really appreciate all the work that you've done and all of the advice that you have given us, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity. It was a real pleasure.
On three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much.
And our next recognition, and again, on behalf of our staff, the citizens of Burnsville, and the city council, I would like to recognize and appreciate Patrick Julick for his dedicated service to our communities, serving on the Planning Commission, June 2009 to June 2014. Patrick? Oh, I didn't see him. Well, Patrick's not here, but we have his plaque, so what we will do is mail this to Patrick. So, thank you so much. And now, Police Chief Gieske.
Could you come up and join me? Madam Mayor, members of the council, thanks so much for having me here tonight, allowing me to present a word on behalf of the Police Department, and standing, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Eric Gieske, I'm the police chief, and standing next to me is Mr. Mark Selko. So if you give me a moment just to read this citizen accommodation, it's something I'm proud to do. "On Tuesday, May 13th, 2014, at approximately 14:10 hours, while driving in the area of 131st Street and Nicolet Avenue in Burnsville, you witnessed a female police officer struggling with a juvenile male. During the altercation, the officer began yelling, 'Gun, he's trying to get my gun.' Without regard for your personal safety, you quickly stopped your vehicle, you helped the officer. Upon reaching the scene, you physically confronted the male suspect by grabbing him and assisted the officer by taking the suspect to the ground to gain control of the situation. The suspect was immediately secured and taken into custody pending charges of fourth-degree assault on a police officer. Therefore, Mark A. Selko, on behalf of the Burnsville Police Department, I commend you for your keen observation skills and willingness to assist Officer Syme in this incident. Despite the risk of personal injury to yourself, you displayed courage in a time of heated confrontation during this rapidly evolving situation. Thank you for helping to make Burnsville a safer community." I would like to add one thing, and it's important to note this. The day after I had the opportunity to meet with Mark, Captain Schwartz and I went out to meet with him, he actually sent the Burnsville Police Department an email thanking us for the service we do after he put himself in harm's way. Shows you what a hero he is and what character he has.
Thank you so much.
Okay, on three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Glad nothing happened to you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Grass. I live at 13615 Oakland Drive, and it's just more of an FYI that I'm going to start a little thing trying to realign the school district boundaries. On Oakland Drive, you'll know that that is the dividing line between 196 and 191, and the people that live on our street that have little kids could easily walk down to the elementary school, walk down to junior high, instead of being bussed way down the road. So I'll be starting that, and that's going to be something, I don't know if you ever hear about it again, but I'm going to rattle people's cages on up the line and just giving you guys an FYI that it's time starts.
Mr. Grass, you'll probably have to start, you need to start that at the legislative...
No, I know, but I'm just giving you the heads up that, you know...
Good, well, we really appreciate it.
It's out of control, because Burnsville is, you know, the line between Apple Valley and Burnsville is kind of divided, it's there. You know, Cedar Avenue is a good dividing line between Burnsville and Eagan, so if you're on this side of the road, you go to 191, that side of the road, you go to 196. So, just giving you a heads up that I'm going to be beating on people's doors and trying to rattle cages, so to speak.
Thank you for giving us the heads up, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Seeing no one, we will move on. The next item on the agenda is for emergency items only, and this is additions to the final agenda. Mrs. Johnston, is there any emergency?
Members of the council.
Any emergency items? Thank you. We now move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, however, an item can be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Ms. Flanagan, so you're, what item on the consent agenda are you wanting to remove?
Wait a minute. I'm Jeff Flanagan with Burnsville Motors, co-owner and...
You want Item H to be removed for a separate discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Item H is being removed for a separate discussion and vote. Mrs. Johnston, anything else from staff?
None from staff members.
Members of the council, may I have a motion for the balance, please? Councilmember Sherry makes the most motion, second by councilmember Keely. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Gersich. And both of you have asked to speak on the item Freedom Enterprise, and the item Freedom Enterprise is the application for Freedom Enterprise for a conditional use permit amendment for a time extension to complete the building expansion at 2000 Highway 13, Frontage Road North. Mr. Flanagan.
Yes. First of all, we want to thank you for the extension you've granted us with the three years. Unfortunately, it's just, it's not going to be enough time to recover. We had, of course, a little tougher economy, we've been on a construction for the last couple of years, and it's just now to be faced with three years to have to add on another 2,700 square feet. Financially, it just wouldn't make sense to us. If we can get a longer time, we definitely intend to add on to the building, but we need to do it when it's, when it makes sense. Right now, we're not busting out at the seams and just add on to add on it. It really would make things tough, tough for us at this time.
Yeah, we're in survival mode right now. We're a small business, family-owned, and we're ripped up right now. County Road 5 is our exit, and it's shut off, it's been shut off since last fall, and it's affecting us long-term, so anything we can do would help.
Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Gersich, when you applied for your business back in 2003, we gave you an extension of 10 years, so, and it's coming up next year. And so, you asked for another extension, and our staff is saying three years.
All right.
That will help you, but that'll be a total of 13 years for all of that. Mr. Slenya and Ms. Faulkner, you have anything to add to this discussion?
Madam Mayor, I would just add that we knew that 13 and 5 was coming when they came in for their conditional use permit and had planned for that. We're certainly very understanding to the economic conditions and that you are under construction. There was a total, what we're proposing, or what staff is recommending and the Planning Commission's recommended to you, would give them until 2018, which is 15 years from when their building was originally constructed. And the intent of that provision was to not have small buildings with large lots in that Highway 13 corridor. It was part of, I believe, the gateway study to kind of turn over that Highway 13 area. So, to keep granting extensions seems to be contrary to the intent of the ordinance. However, our recourse, if they choose not to follow that, is to proceed down the road to revoke their CUP, or perhaps grant them a variance since the hardship criteria have changed. So I just want you to be aware of the alternatives should they not do the addition.
When we first, when we first bought the lot, or bought the land over there and built, we were told that there was an easement, that we were subject to losing on County Road 5. And since, since then, of course, if anybody's driven by there, and I'm sure most people have, we have a wall that's approximately...
Yeah, 18 feet high.
And all the way around the dealership. So we've been compromised quite a bit once again, and we're just trying to make the right decisions, we're just asking for help. If anybody has any suggestions, we're willing to listen.
We would love to add on, because that means business is great, and our service department's rocking and rolling, but it's today, and it's tough, just like everybody.
Councilmember Sherry.
I was on the Planning Commission when you went in there, and I remember that issue about the easement. Steve can probably answer this. When is that intersection going to be all finished?
Well, we're hopeful this fall everything will be open, but right now, they've moved to the north side of the road, so all access, even the exit at Park Jeep is closed down too, and less access on the north side of the road now through the end of the project. So the goal is obviously to have it open this fall before winter, that is the goal.
Both sides?
Yes, yes, to have the bridge and everything functioning. We may not have all the restoration done, but to have the roadways open by the end of the construction season is the goal, and we feel, Ames feels they're on schedule for that, but it's going to be September, October before things are open in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Keely, I thought you were on...
Oh, sorry.
Okay, did you take yourself off, Councilmember Keely?
Well, I, I've been struggling with this a little bit since we covered it in our one-on-ones with Heather, and I believe, clarify, what was the extension that you had asked for?
We were, 10 years.
Another 10?
Which probably was a little further outside the window that we were looking for. The mitigating factor here is the 5 and 13 construction, and that's something they didn't necessarily, you can't plan as a business 10 years down the road how bad road construction is going to affect your business. So I'm sympathetic to the applicant's request for more time, but is the right amount of time, I don't know. And three years seemed reasonable, but a little on the short side, because a business of that size, and Madam Mayor, you've been in business before, and when you're planning, you're planning three to five years out, funding for an expansion of that is something you plan for ahead. So right now is not a great time from a, I mean, if I'm sitting in their shoes, I'm not feeling really ecstatic about planning on spending on a substantial amount of money yet. I need a year or two under my belt of good business recovering, and I'm also familiar with a business that can take on a hardship, and it can take a while to get back out of that hardship. And there may be other circumstances I'm not familiar with, but I don't really care, I'm looking at it for what it is on the surface, and that is, we have a business that has been directly impacted by this construction, and I want to be reasonable with response. At the same time, I also want to put a cap on whatever we decide, there is no more extensions. In other words, let's give the extension that is required, that makes sense for them, that can work for them, and that is it. There won't be, there won't be any extensions beyond that, because if we, for instance, I would propose five years, once that five years is up, it's, you know, it's either, you know, pass or play at that point, because I can't see any reason for it to be extended beyond that. But this is a mitigating factor that is a significant financial hardship that I have, you know, we've taken up these types of issues in the past, when there's road construction that really is, has a financial detriment to a business, and when it's this large and over this amount of time, it can become an extremely large financial hardship that it takes a while to recover from. So I would recommend that we go to five years.
Let me ask, so there was a taking, an easement, and we paid for that, because whenever we have to do that, we pay you when we take land. How much was that?
I'll be honest, I don't know off the top of my head. I believe there was a $400,000 settlement, but I may be wrong. That was the county, now, understand, the county actually is the lead in the project, so the county acquired right-of-way from the property owner. The city shares in a portion of that cost, 45%.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So you received $400,000?
Yeah.
2,700 square foot expansion?
Would be about $400,000. And we were, since 2006, times were a little tough, if anybody remembers. The economy was not, was not a stellar economy, and it's just starting to bounce back now. We've, we put everything we had into this business, and we fought hard, and we're just, we're not the Luther's or the Walzer's, we're just two guys that followed a dream, and it took us a long time. That $400,000 was everything we needed just to keep everything moving along, and we did what we can, so.
Okay. Members of the council, Councilmember Keely, and then I'll go to Councilmember Coughlin.
Well, I want to respond to that, Madam Mayor. I think that type of situation helps backfill some of the hit that an economy can give, or even this road construction, but knowing finances of a business not nearly as big as this one, but of all sizes, you can't consider that the cure-all in a business of that size. And so I don't want you to...
No, I just want to know...
Make them feel like, well, you know, you got, you sold some land, you had some easement, that should have fixed your problem. We don't, you don't know the inside numbers and the accounting, and, you know, it just doesn't work that way, and you know that.
Yeah, I understand all of that.
I just kind of want to make sure that that's cleared up, that's not...
No, I understand all of that. They mentioned that there was a taking. I just want to make sure that our people at home who are listening understand that a taking is not just that we took land for the road. No, we paid you for the land, so, and you did get compensated for it. That is what I wanted to make clear for those who are listening.
Sure.
Because sometimes people think, oh, you took land, and now they have all of this, and, no, there is compensation. You are paid for that land. So Councilmember Coughlin.
Well, Mr. Flanagan, you and I have had the pleasure of meeting and talking in the past, not about this, but about your business in general. Part of the, you know, part of my struggle with this is you presented the same arguments to the Planning Commission, and they voted unanimous to kind of hold your feet to the fire, which I understand, the three years, does it run from 2015 through 2018, is that correct? And, I mean, Councilmember Keely makes, you know, again, I struggle, you know, I assumed you guys were probably going to show up this evening, so I struggled with this as well, and, you know, again, I'm, you know, along Councilmember Keely's argument, I suppose, maybe I might be willing to look at a, because, because again, it takes a lot for me to not follow or respect what the Planning Commission determines on a unanimous vote. And so they obviously had thought about it as well, and I, so I would say that I might be willing to think about four years, which would acknowledge the year of construction, but, you know, suddenly we're into, otherwise we're into 2020, and, you know, and again, you know, a car, a car business is a tough business. I mean, there's a cycle to it, it's just a tough business, and, you know, so, so I, you know, I would not be against going four years.
Okay.
To acknowledge the one year of construction.
Councilmember Winn.
Well, I feel the same way as Councilmember Coughlin, that it's, you know, you struggle, what's the right thing to do, but I guess I feel that I agree with Councilmember Keely that it would be, under the circumstance, I think reasonable to extend it, and as he said, what's the right amount? Is it four, is it five? You know, I guess we can, we'll have to decide on that, but I think given the circumstance, I would like to see, like to see you have a little more time to make it work for you. But again, it would, that would be it. That'd be the last one, yeah.
Councilmember Sherry.
Well, I am in agreement, and I, the question is just what is the right time? I don't know. But I think that even prior to that, that road being disrupted and dug, in essence, that intersection has looked like it's under construction for 10 years. I mean, you had vacant buildings, you had the old Sinclair Station, you had the restaurants that were abandoned. Honestly, it's just, I mean, not just for your business, but it's just been really tough, and I think our vision for that area, and I'm not speaking just as council, I think every citizen of Burnsville wants to see healthy retail or whatever kind of business down in that area, in business that looks good. So I, I agree with Bill on the Planning Commission issue, but I think that there are other things to take into consideration here other than what the Planning Commission can do. I could live with five, if three of us can't work for, you know, go with five years, then four would be my decision, so, but I think it could go a little longer.
Members of the council, reasonableness is, is what I'm hearing all of us say that we need to move in this direction. So reasonableness needs to also be on your side, and I would say that in three years, you need to bring your plans in, concept plans. Bring it in in three years, shows us your good faith that you're moving in the direction of the expansion. And so in three years, you bring those plans into our staff, and that also tells us that you're putting money away to make sure that you meet the five-year deadline if five years is the reasonable timeframe. But I would like the condition, a condition added, that in three years, you bring that concept plan in.
Understood.
And then at the end, and then, and then a date certain then comes with when you will be bringing in the final plans for the completion of the building. Mr. Slenya.
Madam Mayor, council, I just wanted to mention something unique due to the timing on this. The original project was approved in January, the end of January. So from a staff level, each year is an extension, we're using January as the deadline month. So just something to keep in mind, if we're saying five years, that is January of 2020. So that realistically means that the last construction season will be 2019, rather than, you know, a deadline in July or something like that where they'd have part of the year.
What I would suggest, members of the council, that the condition spells that out.
Yes.
If the council is agreeable, that we go with five years, and with a, with a condition that in three years, they bring a concept plan in, and then a date certain in 2019, they bring in the application for building. Is that, is that agreeable with the council?
Amending a motion that I never made?
No, 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 I am suggesting, I am suggesting for what a motion could be, so, but I just want to make sure, if we go down that line, then the conditions have to reflect all of that. The finding's a fact.
Should we spell out that it would be then the... Should we spell out that it would be then the 2018 would be the year for architectural drawings, 2019 is construction year and done essentially by the end of the construction year, which is the end of the fifth year, basically?
And that can be all spelled out in the findings of fact with a motion that if you so wish to make?
I'd like to make a motion to extend Freedom Enterprises... Did I get that correct? Freedom Enterprises LLC to a five-year extension with architectural drawings brought in in the year 2018, concept drawings, and construction be completed by the end of 2019.
Is a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Sherry. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you, and I hope that that helps.
Thank you very much, mayor and council members. Appreciate it.
Big ribbon cutting the opening when that...
Yeah, because that's going to be very nice, 20, you know, when you add on your additional square feet. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening on the regular agenda. There is no item on the regular agenda, and the consent agenda is complete. So a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
Councilmember Coughlin makes the motion, second by Councilmember Keely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.